Food service?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I was just somewhere with you, okay. I'm back now. Am I?
Are you?
I don't care. But by the way, so we don't have someone doing the minutes, so she's gonna have to take the minutes off the.
The sound works, sir.
You hear that thumping? Someone in the closet? Two seniors.
All right, sounds good.
Sounds good. What? You're not sending screenshots? Call to order the school committee meeting, May 23rd, 2024. Steph, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
Mike's got the roll call.
Yeah, so Ms. McRice is not here tonight, so we're just gonna do this. It's on tape and it's live, so we'll just pull the minutes off that. So just a quick roll call. Mr. Hatch?
Here.
Ms. Mastacola?
Here.
Mr. Whitrich?
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Sereno, here. So we're gonna just go to the report of the school committee chair. So I just want to first wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, but I want everyone to understand why we celebrate this day. I want to thank the families and the heroes who sacrificed for the freedoms we enjoy today. And I want everyone to take some time and give thanks to, you know, all the men and women who served, who gave us this right. This is one country that we enjoy freedoms that no one understands. And I think it was, those were given to us by the blood of others, and we just need to recognize that. And I just wanna congratulate the seniors and their families who are graduating, let them know their sachems forever. And it's, you guys have a warranty with the school, so if anything gets broken, you can come back and we'll fix it. So I'd just like to turn it over to you guys to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I too want to thank everybody for their hard work and accomplishments and wish the seniors well. This is a great, great new page that they're turning and an exciting adventure that they'll all be going into. I think that it's amazing that they should know that they have so much support here and always will. I'm living proof. I talk to some of my old teachers on a weekly basis, and I know that, you know, my son's in college right now, and some of his teachers right here at the middle school, high school complex still contact him. So this is a great institution. It's a great place that we have. This thing that we call sachems is real. And I just wish you and your families such a great time and such an exciting time in your life for your next chapter. I also too want to thank all of the veterans, the families who have served and suffered for all of us. Memorial Day is a pretty special holiday that we celebrate and give tribute to those who sacrificed so much. So thank you.
I just wanted to take a minute to say congratulations to the recipients of the unsung hero award last night, or was it last night? No.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, oh my god. Pedro Marilla, Gwen Thurston, Reese Delmuto, Louis Feng Chen, Victoria Vanna, Jordan Chanta, and Catherine D'Souza. It was a beautiful celebration for them. And I did want to just, I just wrote a little something for the class of 2024. I just wanted to say congratulations. And when you walk out these doors for the final time as a graduated senior, don't let it be the last. Circle back around and reflect on the journey that made you who you are today, most of all what you will continue to become. I encourage you to be kind, but most of all respectful. A good leader appreciates others and can agree to disagree. Success will always follow you if your heart and mind remains open. Use your voice wisely and remain of good character. Whether you're college-bound, heading into the workforce, or joining the military, always be proud of who you are. We all come from diverse backgrounds and have different images of what success should look and feel like. Please also say thank you to your parents, grandparents, family members, or whoever has raised you. Take the time out to thank that special teacher who believed in you when sometimes you didn't always believe in yourself. I had many of those. These people have traveled down this road with you and will continue to. Never, ever take them for granted. As a new school committee member, I've spoken to many of the students, and every time I walk away, it makes me proud to sit up here and represent them. Be proud to be a Saugus sachem and congratulations on your journey.
I have the same speech. So honestly, to the seniors, just want to say congratulations, but I'm gonna give the same advice I give every single year is stay off social media. So you don't need strangers' approval for anything that you do in life. You're gonna be just fine without their thumbs up or their, what else they got there might be? The winky emoji and stuff?
The winky emoji.
You're gonna be just fine without all that stuff, believe me. You don't need their approval. I do want to congratulate the girls softball team. This is the eighth year in a row they've made the tournament. Steve Elquess is outstanding coach, he really is. They have, every year they have a ton of talent, but they lose a ton of talent to graduation. Somehow, some way, they get the freshmen and the eighth graders that come up, and they just fill those spots like seamlessly, you know? So congratulations to the girls and good luck. I know this, they moved their senior day to Monday at 3 o'clock at, I think it's at Belmonte. Yes, Belmonte. So in case anybody's interested in heading down there. Oh, the band concert too. I want to say the summer band concert was incredible. The winter, it's the middle school and high school together, and they had Tonal Chaos there and just incredible. I can't believe how talented these kids are. It really blows my mind. There was a kid that he had a solo with a flute, and it was nuts, you know, it was incredible. The kids are just so talented. It just blows my mind how much talent that we have coming out of these schools. I wish the band would kind of, I don't know, I wish we could somehow, some way, get them out there more, reckon, you know, get them recognized more. They're an unbelievable group, and I feel like we're missing out a lot by, you know, people not seeing them. Of course, Tonal Chaos was there and they were, they killed it again. That beatbox kid, I love that kid. It's unbelievable what he does.
It's just, you're so right about the talent we have in the arts and the schools, and we gotta do more.
And there's so much more that I'm missing too, you know, so it's, it is crazy, so. You wanna talk about the parade now, or you wanna talk about?
No, you could talk about it now.
Let's talk about now.
Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan?
He's about to walk in the doors.
Okay, I'll see if he wants to, if he wants to add anything. Oh, there he is. Mr. Sullivan. Hey, I was just about to talk about the cop parade. You wanna come up to the mic in case it's something I missed?
So I was literally in the other room, just sending out an email about the cop parade. So it is Tuesday, starting at 6:00, so we, you know, asking for the seniors and their families who want to participate to get over the Blessed Sacrament for the staging area by, you know, around 5:30, so we can start lining up. And then I detailed the route, and we can, I can't remember it off the top of my head.
I got it right here.
But we'll make our way from Blessed Sacrament over to the complex. And then we figure, based off of what it took in the past, it should be over by about 6:45. But, you know, again, on how things go, but yeah, it'll be Tuesday evening, start of, you know, an active senior week, so looking forward to it.
Yeah, it'll be good. I just want to say, anybody who wants to watch the parade, the kids come out of Blessed Sacrament and take a left on Summer Street, all the way to the end, go down Appleton Street, take a right onto Central, go through the center of town. We're gonna take a right on Adams Ave, and then a right on Dow Street, or Adams Court, whatever, by the Belmonte. So people can actually park over there and stay in there if they want. Then they're gonna come out to Denver Street, take a left, go to the end of Denver, and left on Talbot, and straight ahead across Highland Ave. Sorry Highland Ave neighbors, we're gonna have a little more traffic for you. Sorry, I shouldn't laugh. And then when we get to the end, we're gonna take a right, go by the front of the complex, and then head right out to Main Street and head back. So, and as we said, there's no congregating after.
Yeah, no congregating, you know, afterwards, or, you know, at the, we're just, Blessed Sacrament's allowing us to use them as a staging area, but we're not congregating or, you know, tailgating or anything at that, just staying with our cars and then doing the parade so they can, you know, celebrate with the entire town. And then after the end, when they get up to Main Street, they go home and get a good night's rest because we have another graduation rehearsal Wednesday morning.
They have a lot of stuff planned that week, so.
Yeah.
I'd just like to take a second to thank Mr. Whitrich for working this out, the cop parade.
You know what? Now that you said that, I want to thank Chief Riccadelli and the Saugus Police Department. I really think that, I know the police, you know, they, we see them, but we don't really appreciate them as much as we should. It's an incredible, incredible, I see them every day at their, at their place, every day I see them, and it's, the men and women over there are just incredible, incredible people. They're to help, and I just, I'm just blown away by the generosity and stuff, you know, and what they do. So to the chief and all the patrolmen, everybody, lieutenants, all the way down, thank you very much. We appreciate everything you guys do for us. Oh, sorry, it's going this way. Skipped over you.
I just wanted to congratulate the seniors. I feel like every year, we're, I'm just so impressed by the senior class that we have. They've really taken lemons and made them into lemonades over the last few years with everything that's been going on. I definitely feel that this class, even in particular, has shown just a lot of great adaptation. Anytime something knocked them down, they turned it into a plus, and I think they have life skills that people two, three, four times their age don't have, so that their future is very bright. So just congratulations to the students, but especially the senior class. And also just wanted to thank Superintendent Ms. Andrews for all their hard work on the budget. FinCom unanimously approved our budget this past week, so more work on that. So, thank you.
Excellent. So moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Well, you basically stole all my time, but I do want to thank.
Should go first next time.
I do want to thank all those that gave their lives for our country during Memorial Day coming up on Monday. So I do want to thank them and their families. And I do, my big thing right now is, you know, wishing, wishing the best of luck.
Wishing the best of luck to the class of 2024, congratulating them on everything they achieved and everything they overcame.
Everybody else shut up besides me.
It's okay. They do have a lot coming up. You talked about the cop parade on Tuesday. We really kicked things off with the unsung hero this Tuesday. Tonight, Mr. Sullivan and I actually have to leave here after this meeting and attend the alumni awards at the MEG building. Then on Tuesday, they have the cop parade. Wednesday, they have their academic and scholarship night at 6:00. You're all, all your school committee members are invited to attend. That's usually a great night then. On Thursday, they have the prom. It starts out with the promenade at 4:00, so that's where they all walk across and get seen by their peers and their families. And everything concludes on Friday at 6:00 with graduation at the Sereno Stadium. So it's just a very busy time and a very exciting time, especially for me, because as John mentioned, his son, who is a graduate. My second daughter is, my second daughter graduated from high school this year. She's fourth generation Saugus High graduate. My grandmother actually was the valedictorian of the class of 1930. So it's this fourth, fourth generation of my family as Saugus High graduates. So definitely always a sachem. So I do feel very much pride in that. And lastly, I did wanna, and this was not something I was gonna mention, I was gonna put in my educator update on Friday and my community newsletter next week, but when you talked about the band, they actually got a chance this week to play. It was in, it might have been yesterday, it could have been the day before. It was one of the really, really hot days. They performed at the Fisher Cats game, so it was a great time for them. So I mean, they really have showcased their talents well, and I know that Mr. Jones is hoping, you know, moving forward, maybe he gets a Red Sox game in and plays there, so I know that's what he's hoping for.
Yeah.
But I just want to thank everybody who has supported me over this time, and I'm glad that the students are making their one last lap at Saugus High in there. They're the first class, they're the first high school class to spend their four years at the new Saugus High School. So they're the ones that came in in hybrid. They were the first freshman class in that new building. So they've, they've never attended the old school, so this is to them the only Saugus High they've ever known. So.
Excellent. Moving on to the finance report.
Thank you. And you all should have in front of you the FY '24 actual to budget as of April 30th, 2024. Saugus Public Schools has expended and encumbered $23,59,867.35. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on this. I will tell you that in my world, this is already old news. So much has happened in the three weeks since this, this month closed. We are projecting out for the end of the year, going back, checking all the payroll lines once again. As you know, we've had a lot of turnover this year. We've had positions that haven't been filled. We've had to employ alternate services for students in order to meet IEPs. Cost of everything has gone up. We are all aware, are well aware of that. So since this close of April 30th, a lot of work going on. And you see that reflected in your budget amendment number seven. So it really is taking all the unpaid leaves, maternity leaves, sick time, going back, capturing any positions that were not filled, any positions that might have been partially filled, and taking those savings and reallocating them to lines like special ed transportation, McKinney-Vento as always. This is pretty much how we fund McKinney-Vento, because there's no way for us to ever know exactly how many students we're gonna have. So that's what you have in front of you. You also have the grant balances as of April 25th, a snapshot in time. Again, much happening since April 25th, working with the directors to spend the grants that need to be spent, going back, analyzing all the lines, making sure that everything that needs to be spent by the end of this year will be spent. The last report you have are the revolving accounts. As I told you a while ago, we're gonna do those quarterly. So, because it takes a while for all the revenue to be posted in these fee-based accounts, so there's always a lag. So if I, if I gave you the April report now, Town Hall has not had enough time to reconcile their bank accounts and make sure that all revenue was posted. So this is a little bit more accurate. That doesn't mean that I'm not looking. I'm still looking and ensuring that we're always in the positive. So that's really what you need to see there. We have no issues with our revolving accounts. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I just have one question if I can. Ms. Andrews, I just have a question. So SIR 3 goes away in September. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you anticipate fully expanding the SIR line item?
We're looking to do so, yes. That's the plan.
It's a lot of dough in that.
Yeah, September 2024.
Right. Because there's 1.3 million remaining?
I'm sorry.
What, the balance now is approximately 1.3?
So the balance as of April 25th was 1.362 million. Today, it's about down to 1.2, and it will just keep coming down. We have a plan to expand it in full. So that's one of the things we're doing right now at the end of the year. It becomes very critical this next month to balance the operating budget with the grants, with the revolving accounts, ensuring that the revolving account has enough reserves so that fees don't have to go up, ensuring that the grants are spent, ensuring that the budget is spent. So we're balancing all that right now.
Just so people understand in the SIR account, it's, we can't use those for salaries. We can't use those for positions. Those need to be incumbent on one-time use.
One-time expense, correct. Anything else?
Nope.
Any other questions? The last item I bring before you, very simply, a request to vote to bring back complete cleaning for year three of their contract. As you recall, they had a one-year contract with the right to extend two. So this would now be, this vote would be for the third and final year of this contract.
Okay. Well, we'll do that now. So do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table it until we have a facility subcommittee meeting, because, you know, it's a million-dollar contract. I'd like to have more than 20 seconds to go over it and make sure that everything's getting done, that we need done. I know sometimes we have issues with certain things that they stay on the contract or are in the contract. Just want to be on the same page with everybody, so we'll have a meeting, be it Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, facility subcommittee meeting, and then we can vote on it the next school committee meeting, because there's still time.
Yeah, yep. Chair seconds.
If it's okay with you, sir.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed?
Okay.
Yep.
So.
And next is the budget amendment.
The budget amendment, please, if you could vote for that.
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment number seven.
Chair seconds. We'll do a roll. Mr. Hatch?
Abstain.
Ms. Mastacola?
I apologize. What was this for?
It's just allocation of unused funds to McKinney-Vento and other stuff. All we'll do is move them along from.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Whitrich?
Yes.
Mr. Sereno, yes. Four, one abstain. Moving on to new business, class of 2024, end of year update.
I think we've already, we pretty much already covered it.
All right, I just, I thought we did.
Yeah, we already covered that. Yeah, there's nothing else to add. Thank you.
So next we have approval of bills dated May 23rd, 2024, in the amount of $646,4931.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of State's FY '25 FC 202 Vacation Acceleration Academies Grant in the amount of $168,000 is, Ms.
Ms. Turbin.
Turbin, yeah, sorry.
Hi, how are you? This grant is a summer early literacy grant, and it's an acceleration academy. We're pleased that we were awarded $168,000. That's gonna be for a two-week acceleration academy. The days will be August 12th to August 23rd, so it'll be right before we start school. They will be half-days, five days a week from 8:00 to 12:00. We will be sending, so this will be Rising K all the way to Rising eighth graders. So it'll go across the district, again, focused just on literacy. It's gonna be run by our own certified staff who have committed to those two weeks, so I applaud them for applying for that. It's great because they know the grade level standards that will be expected for the kids coming in. So we hope to set teachers up with kids that will be coming into their grade level. Letters will be going out in the next three weeks to students who were chosen. It's pretty strict. It's based on data. Kids who need that push the most, based on the data. We ask that when families get the letter, that they commit to the two weeks. If they can't commit, to let us know, and we're gonna go to the next person on the list. So we'll make sure that we have approximately 25 people per grade level, 25 students per grade level. So this is great. It will really build confidence, give kids a boost coming in, all the way from K to eight.
So I just have one question, if we could. I know letters are nice, but sometimes letters just don't get read. If we could just follow up maybe with an email too?
Yeah, actually, we're gonna hire a coordinator for each, the VELC, the BSA, and the middle school. So those leaders will be in charge of ensuring that there's a prompt commitment, that the letters were received, that there's a commitment from the families, a returned letter, and if not, somebody else will be added to that list. And I really would like to thank Kelly Donahue and Kristy Baker, who originally found the grant and helped write the grant in support of our students. So originally, it was gonna be the VELC, and then we really just sat together and rewrote it and pushed it all the way to incoming eighth grade.
Excellent. Thanks again. I mean, I, really, Kelly and Kristin did great, and you did a great job with the grants. And I think, not that we overlook it, but I think sometimes the community doesn't understand what it takes to get a grant, or what the work that takes to get a grant.
Yeah, this was a pretty competitive grant. And again, we, you know, like SIR, the other grants, we've really been pretty thoughtful about making sure that we've pushed for curriculum. Those one-time purchases are really expensive, and to get new curriculum across the district through these grants really has helped us. A lot of districts are out of their SM money. We're not really thoughtful about what we've done and used it for.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, I'm sorry, to accept the State's FY '25 FC 202 Vacation Accelerated Academies Grant in the amount of $168,000.
Chair seconds, we'll do a roll. Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Ms. Mastacola?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Whitrich?
Yes.
Mr. Sereno, yes. Once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So acceptance of minutes of May 9th, 2024, open school committee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of minutes of May 9th, executive school committee, May 9th, 2024, executive sessions, school committee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our request for a half-day for high school students on Tuesday, June 11th. I'm assuming this is 2024.
24, yep.
Yeah, it's not retroactive. Thank you. So what I'm asking for is just for students in grades nine, 10, 11, to dismiss students in grades nine, 10, 11 in good standing who have completed all of their final exams at about 11:20 on Tuesday, the 11th. That's the second to last day of school. So this year, for the first time since pre-COVID, we brought back mid-year and final exams at the high school, which I think is very helpful in not only assessing student knowledge at the end, but making sure that all of our high school students are staying on task right to the very end of the school year. One of the problems that we ran into in mid-year exams, we give the exams in double blocks. So we, we give two or three exams a day over three days. And on the first day, they take two exams in the morning, have lunch, then they go to a couple of classes in the afternoon for review. On the Monday, they would go and take three exams and have lunch in the, in the middle. And then on Tuesday, they have two exams in the morning. We ran a very similar schedule in January for mid-year exams. Worked pretty well overall. The one problem we ran into was makeup exams. If a student is absent, out sick on one of the days, there's not much time to give a makeup. It's, you know, very challenging for a teacher. You know, they can't be giving a makeup and teaching a class with students in there, so we had makeup rooms. So what we're asking here is that the students who have finished their exams and are in good standing by 11:20, that they can be dismissed in grades nine, 10, 11. And then we have about two and a half hours that afternoon for the students who need to go do makeup exams and can go see their teachers. And if we have some students who are right on the cusp of pass. And if we have some students who are right on the cusp of passing and maybe need to go see a teacher and finish some assignments and finish out the year, all right, they have an opportunity to go see their teachers too. And so it's very similar to what we used to run in the high school back before where we would give exams in the morning and students would leave and we'd have the afternoons free. But we're just asking for on January, excuse me, on June 11th. We have the time and time on learning, so it won't impact us there. So, thank you.
Let me just ask you a question because maybe I didn't understand this. So you said two exams on Monday, so explain it to me, Ian.
So on Friday.
Okay, Friday.
On Friday, June 7th, they take two exams, so, and they're double blocks. The exams are about an hour and a half long. So they'll go to homeroom. They take one exam starting at about 8 o'clock. They finish it a little after 9:30. They have a couple of minutes to get to their next exam room. Then they take an exam that lasts to about quarter past 11, 11:20. Then there's lunch and then there's a few regular classes after lunch for review. On the Monday, they do three exams. The two in the morning, lunch, and then one in the afternoon. And then what I'm asking on Tuesday is two exams in the morning, period six, period seven, which would run us until about 11:17. And then for students who are, have completed all of their exams, that they be allowed to be dismissed. And then we have from 11:17 to 2:15 for teachers to administer the makeup exams. Because we need to have the grades by 8:00 a.m. on the 12th so that we can determine who's moving forward, who might need fourth-term credit recovery, and get our report cards issued.
Let me just ask you a quick question. So how many kids do you think this would affect?
My hope, the most of them. But it would probably be the vast majority of them. So after the seniors leave and we have, you know, a little bit over 500, I would guess, hopefully about 400 or more are all done with their exams, all caught up with their work and able to go. And if we can keep the number of makeups to 100 students or less, that would be preferable. Part of the problem you run into though is oftentimes if a student has to do makeup, they might have two and that's where the double, because they might be absent on Friday and miss two exams. So that's where the double block makeup is helpful, that they can do one and then the other. Or if they get one done earlier in the week after school, they have a chance to get the other one done.
But the teachers would be staying the whole day?
Teachers stay the whole day, yeah. And I would venture to guess almost every single teacher will have a couple of kids staying with them to do makeup. But at least then they can focus on just doing the makeup exam, administering it with fidelity and not also have to watch, you know, their regular classes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just have one question. So the alternative to this, if we do this, would be, students would be coming back into a class?
Students would go to lunch.
After they already took a final exam.
They would go back into the class that they've already taken the final exam and we would organize testing rooms where teachers send the tests down to proctors and the proctors administer it, which is doable. The problem is if a student has a question, it's a proctor giving the test, not the teacher.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is you've taken your final exam.
Yeah, the final exam.
And then you're going to a class. You've already taken your final exam.
Yeah, and the students are good. They're great and they go along with it, but they recognize that.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes less work for the clerks too because they get inundated with dismissals if we don't do it.
There would likely be some dismissals.
Did anyone else have, I didn't want to talk.
No, I don't have a question. The half-day, I think is reasonable to ask. I don't love the expectation that the students are waiting until June 11th to make up work.
Oh, no, no, I mean, so we're not, we're not, you, it's, that's a secondary benefit and it's a small number of students it affects. But, you know, the teachers, you know, my teachers will be working right up until, you know, minutes after grades are due with students to give them the opportunity to get the grades in. So this is just one more chance for students to go back, make up that work. But the focus is on allowing them to make up the final exam because if a kid misses that and they don't have the opportunity to make that up, then, you know.
No, I'm all for that. I'm all for that. That's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to make, I'm going to get the year right. Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, a half-day for high school students in grades nine, 10, 11.
Grades nine, 10, 11.
Chair seconds. Do a roll. Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Ms. Mastrecola?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Whittridge?
Yes.
Mr. Sereno, yes. Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next, we move on to acceptance of gifts from the Belmonte Seem Academy PTO. Not to go off on a tangent, but I think PTOs, they just don't get enough recognition for the work they do. It's, everything I hear that they're doing is just above and beyond, I think. Now, the way schools are structured and the way things are going, the PTOs go above and beyond. And I just want to, you know, as a committee, I just want to recognize them and thank them. And the last thing I would ask is for more parents to get involved. I think, I think the more parents that are involved in the PTOs and come, you know, we have a former PTO chair over here. So I think really it's, like, you look at the gifts that they're giving us and they put a refrigerator in the teacher's room up here and stuff like that. And if you go back years and years ago, PTO, it was so filled with parents that some parents couldn't get on it. And I think it's, we've got to go back to, you know, making it so we get those parents on. So that's all I wanted to say, so. So in the amount of $3,422.50 to cover the cost of field trip buses. So the first one is a fifth-grade field trip to the Saugus Middle High School. That's $722.50. The fourth grade trip to Saugus Industrial History Museum in Lowell is $2,700.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds.
I just got one question. Don't we usually walk, doesn't the fifth grade usually walk down to the, to the middle high school?
I don't know.
I don't know if they.
Why are we doing a bunch on them?
Maybe it was raining, I don't know. Because we usually drive.
It's not much of a field trip either.
Maybe safety as well.
Oh, this isn't for a future field trip. It's for past? Oh, my bad. I got you, all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for clarifying that.
How many days off? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Mr. Chair, that was, I believe the fifth grade came up to see the middle school play bots.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Next, we have public comment. Just has to be on the agenda. Seeing them, do I have anything else?
No, we covered everything, graduation.
One last thing is if you have a chance to get to graduation, if you know any of these seniors get to graduation, it's worth it, you know?
Yeah, and also like I said, the car parade is, it would be big for the kids if everybody came out and supported them. It's maybe 20 minutes of your life that you.
They love the car parade. It's a fun time. It's a fun time.
Yeah, you see how they decorate their cars and stuff and they get pretty creative.
Unlike when we were in school, we just hope our car would start and make it for the whole parade.
Mr. Hatch, she said his grandmother was 1930, valedictorian. I had no idea she went to school with Mr. Hatch. Sorry, Joe. It's been a while since I gave you one, so.
I know. She had Mr. Montal.
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Chair seconds. All in favor? Guys, enjoy your weekend.